All right, this is, has anybody been to the Town Hall before? Raise your hand. All right, yeah, staffs here a lot. Yes. You have your season tickets. Yeah, that's good. That's a hot ticket. Mike, are we recording? Are we ready to rock? Good deal. This will also, is this going to be on the Internet, Mike? All right. Not today, but it'll be available on, if you wish to get a repeat performance, it'll be on there. If you have an awesome question you want to go, "How did I do?", you can go to the website, FH.AZ.gov, and find it as you want to review that in the past, in the future. Today, well, welcome, everyone. Thanks so much for coming. Today, we have quite a few staff here, specifically our Town Manager, Deputy Town Manager, Reno Geddy here from the Community Center, Samantha Kaufman, and Kelly Fawnville. I knew I'd forget as soon as Shawna walked in the door, and Shawna Williams. And thank you all for coming here on the weekend. And specifically, some of them are from the Community Center Senior Services, so if you have any specific questions, those are our two highlights today. But as you may know, Town Hall is very informal, so it's about whatever you wish to speak of. Any concern around town, any information you might be looking to seek, or great ideas you want to share, ways to improve or change what we're doing today. Some input from the public is what this is all about. And in order to have it wide open, we have a limited agenda so that we can have that wide-open dialogue, but that limited agenda requires that we do not have a quorum of our Town Council to meet our open meeting laws that we have in the state of Arizona. That's why we can only have three council members here, myself and two council members. So we've been rotating the council members every meeting. Today, we're lucky to have Mike Archambeau.
Go Cards.
Yeah, and Dennis Brown. And I believe Councilmember Cantino was going to be on this one, but he couldn't make it today, so Mike Archambeau filled in as he'd be next on the next meeting slot, so we'll try to get Councilmember Cantino in on the next Town Hall. But like, as I mentioned, today's focus, since we want to have a focus so that maybe people with specific interest in one thing or another would come forward or want to hear what's going on, we'll give a brief update today on Community Center and Senior Services. In the past, we've highlighted other areas around town, planning and zoning, parks and recreation, Public Works, on and on. So today, we are lucky to be talking about Senior Services and the Community Center. And of course, those efforts to deliver terrific service, we have staff for those functions, as you know, and also we have commissions that work on those areas as we do in the other areas. We have our commission that works on Community Center and our Senior Services Commission that are responsible to also receive ongoing information and updates and work on things on behalf or be the eyes and ears of the Town Council and help work with the staff so that we can continue to deliver great services that meet the needs of our community. So as I mentioned, we'll talk about a couple highlighted areas, and then we'll open it up after we talk a little bit about those areas to whatever you wish to talk, speak on. We have wireless microphones, so don't start talking until I get you the microphone. And any questions? All right. Very good. Well, let me go over a couple of highlights related to Community Center and Senior Services, but we're generally going to have just an open dialogue and answer questions amongst ourselves. And anytime the council members wish to speak, you know, just let me know, we'll get you the microphone as well. Samantha Kaufman put together a nice update for me to review before our meeting today, and I appreciate that, Sam, and staff for putting together that. And of course, staff continues to report to us on a weekly basis across the entire town's functionality through our week-end review updates, which covers everything. But regarding Community Center, we have a subcommittee working on some items in the Community Center. I know Jerry is here and others from other parts, other commissions are here as well, I can see in the audience. So if we have any specific areas, we'll be able to also rely upon not just staff, but commissioners perhaps to answer some more intricate questions. Other efforts in Community Center and Senior Services is the ongoing STS program and give the, to work on the, or specifically give a lift to help with the STS program in getting folks around to appointments and desired services through volunteer drivers, and that's been ongoing. And appreciate all those volunteers that have stepped up to help folks get around town that don't have opportunity to get around town on their own. That, I understand, is going quite well and is not relied, we haven't really needed to tax staff too much on that, who were really the coordinators of that service. Really, the drivers and those with a need for a ride are getting in touch with one another directly and in many cases are making some good friendships there. So that's been a great program and obviously was in great need because the program went away at the county level. So we didn't have an opportunity to fill it with any specific program, but friends helping others is the best way to go anyways. Home Delivered Meals is going well. Today is my day. At, but I got my team partner to handle it today as we had soccer and Town Hall today. But I know Home Delivered Meals has been doing a lot more meals, and of course added a third route, and 916 meals were delivered in November. I know we've got another update for December, I think it's 933 meals delivered in that month. And just for November, we were up from 251 meals in that, in a month, more than the month the year prior. So a huge jump in Home Delivered Meals. So ongoing support of that program by volunteer drivers and delivery people are needed, so, and thank you for your ongoing support there. In November, there were 236 percent increase in the number of area agency-approved meal deliveries as well, so that's probably a large part of our increase in the meals being delivered. Area Agency is an organization that provides for funding for those with greater need for help to pay for the meals. So that's a great resource for those that need that assistance. So we've got more details on Home Delivered Meals, if you want to get into any questions on that. Topic of conversation for several months now has been the liquor permit for the town to maintain at the Community Center. The desire or why that came up is the efforts of town staff and the council and the commissions to make our Community Center as user-friendly as possible, as inexpensive for our service organizations locally, our 501(c)(3) nonprofits to operate, raise money, and be more autonomous. And that seems to be going quite well. If you have any more questions or comments or concerns on that, we can talk about that one as well. In an ongoing effort, one of the subcommittees, I believe, is putting together or has an ongoing stakeholder meeting to make sure we're addressing the needs of the users or our customers, the Community Center. Maybe we can get some more information on that from those involved. And, let's see here. Parking's always an issue over at the Community Center. Today, we have another event. Obviously, as soon as the, it looks like more and more of the mail service folks are parking along La Montana, so that assists with freeing up the parking area. But directional information as where to go, I think that seems to have been helpful, but also there's been sensitivity around handicap parking. And so there was a study recently that we could speak to about how are we doing with the handicap parking? And it looks like currently, we've got about twice as many handicap parking slots that are required. But there's always ongoing changes or needs, and we need to make sure we're attentive and aware of those as well. But ideas come forward from the public, and we want to make sure we're responsive. And in particular, there was a request to remove some yellow striping to free up some additional parking spots, and that was looked into and found that we could not do that and remain within the ADA compliance areas. As far as the Community Center usage, I believe we're pretty much status quo there. Is that pretty, is that right on, Sam? We are looking to continue to maintain that and obviously keep it a Community Center so it's available to the residents here. Senior Services is within the Home Delivered Meals program, so if there, but if there are other items you wish to speak on there, I'd be happy to talk to that as well as their staff. If it's a real detailed question, we can get some more information on that. But let me, before we open up for questions, just point out a couple of things that are on the presentation board here, some upcoming community events. Particular interest, on the 27th, there'll be the Senior and Boomer Activity Expo at 1:00 on that Wednesday. And I don't know if anyone, this past week was out on the avenue to look at the artwork, but the artists were there Tuesday and Thursday of this past week. And every Thursday now, from noon until dusk, there'll be art on the avenue, right in the medians. So drive down the median till you see, drive down the road till you see artists, and then find a parking spot and check it out. We've got, there were Native American artists there, there are local artists there with oil and all different, and stitching and beads and all kinds of artwork there. So get to know your neighbors and their hidden, maybe hidden talents, and spend a few dollars to support our local artists. Pony Express Day is coming up on the 28th, right here, down the avenue. If you haven't taken that in, it's really a lot of fun. They've come running full speed on, you know, the horses do, with the people on top of them, down the avenue, right towards the post office, and it's a lot of fun to watch them ride in, and then there's a celebration associated with that. And we never know exactly what time they're coming, but sometime in the later afternoon on the 28th, we're expecting the Pony Express Hashknife gang to ride in with mail. Where does it start? Winslow or something, or? I think they're bringing, they actually bring mail. They deliver to the post office, so.
First, Colebrook.
Colebrook, that's where it is. And it's got a unique stamp to it, and that's a lot of fun. A lot of good turnout, and then, of course, the kids love the horses and all that. And on the 30th, we have another guided hike put together by our friends that enjoy the, put the trails together and enjoy showing them off, and this focus will be on the plants and around the preserve that we all own. And that one will take off from the Golden Eagle Trailhead in the morning of the 30th. And I mentioned a couple of sporting events here locally, the high school sports team went to last night's basketball game. And last night, I don't think yesterday was a, well, I know it wasn't friendly to Fountain Hills basketball because our middle school team, they didn't win the championship in either of their leagues, and then I know our boys' varsity team didn't, didn't beat the team they were playing, which I think was Phoenix Christian. But it's still a great, great atmosphere to go into the gym and cheer on the Falcons. But here are some additional upcoming dates currently at the high school. Boys' and girls' basketball is underway, as well as soccer and wrestling. So make sure you support your local schools as well by attending the games, and it's just a great positive environment to be at. Councilmembers, did you want anything, add anything before we open up the floor, to questions and ideas? I didn't cover everything, I leave plenty to talk about. Also, if you are, if you endure this entire Town Hall, you will receive a treat at the end. Treats are available at the end, and thanks to Shawna and some of the volunteers out there for putting together the treats, but those are at the end. We will try to wrap up a little bit earlier today, given tremendous circumstances, the Cardinals game. As you might have been able to tell, we're Cardinals fans up here. I'll tell the councilmembers, as we did on Thursday for our Goals Retreat, most of us wore our Cardinal gear, and so did the staff. So we're anxious to see the 2:30 game. So we'll get you out of here in time to get to kickoff, hopefully. If not, just a little after that. But thank you very much for coming. I knew there'd be a few people that wouldn't make it because of the Cardinal game or fear of missing it. And I expect we'll have another opportunity to see the Cardinals next week, too, against, hopefully, the Vikings. That'd be fun. All right, so anything you wish to add based on what I said? Straighten out any information I shared, staff? All right, good. Who has a question or comment or concern here regarding anything at all, or any, anything I mentioned pique your interest, or would you like some more information regarding Community Center or Senior Services? All right. Let me get a microphone to you. I still haven't got Vanna White to handle this yet, but just mention your name, and thank you.
Okay. We're Bob and Diane Weisman. We just moved into town, actually, so, first week. So could you explain, or somebody explain more, the Senior and Boomer Activity Expo? It sounds interesting, so.
This is not a plant. You're not a plant, are you? You're brand new here. Great question. Which staff person might be closest to that to speak to the Seniors and Boomers event?
My name is Kelly, and I'm the supervisor at the Senior Center. Our Senior and Boomers Activity Center is really an opportunity for the citizens to see all the programs, all the activities, the trips that we offer throughout the year at our center. We will have our program coordinators there manning tables with information on dates, times of the activities, so I invite you to join us that day. It's a lot of fun. We also have entertainment at the end and/or prizes.
Do I have the time right, Kelly? 1:00 start? All right. Good. Is there, are there treats?
Yes.
Usually, I'll, well, welcome to Fountain Hills. Good to have you. David? David's going to go, and then we'll come right back.
My name is Dave Carabarty. My wife Marcia and I live six months a year here in a condo, and we have a lot that we want to build a home on and live here 12 months a year. My, my issue that I want to raise is, I recently became aware because of involvement with my building lot of a townwide master sidewalk plan that I believe has been recently finalized. I, the, the street that my property is on happens to be in the plan for a sidewalk. I've spoken with 100% of my neighbors on the street, and none of them were aware of such a plan. And I'm not here all the time, so I can't say for sure, but nobody seems to recall this ever being brought to the public, reviewed with the public, or if the public's input has been asked or in some shape, way, or form can be inputted, I don't know quite the proper form. I, in my case, I, I went to my neighbors, and they were considerably upset about the idea of a sidewalk. This is kind of a rural area way up in North Heights with big estate-sized lots, they're all multiacres. And I have a petition signed by 100% of the residents rejecting such a sidewalk, and I guess I'm asking, what is the proper form to input this, or will there be opportunity in the future to review this plan?
Thank you very much, Dave. There is a master sidewalk plan. The person in Public Works, Tom Ward, responsible for that, is not here today to speak in great detail, but that is something that has come before council over the past several years, and the general plan, I know, has come before us and has been illustrated, and we've received some feedback on. But before we get into each specific area, there's a lot more due diligence and a lot more public meeting that are, that are offered as well. But your feedback's always welcome at any time. But Tom Ward probably is the best one to follow up with, is that right, Rick? Specifically to get more information around timing, or it may be us be a plan at this time, that, an overlay that just may not come to fruition for quite some time from now. Does councilmember want to speak to that? Mike, do you want to add anything that you're aware of on that?
Did you, did you talk about how the master sidewalk plan was derivative of the strategic planning process?
No.
What was that, five years ago now, Rick? Five years ago, we did a strategic planning process, and one of the things that came forward was connectivity between major portions of Fountain Hills. I don't know what street you live on, Dave, but they were, the one that I'm thinking of is primarily for major streets and collector's streets so that people have some kind of connectivity without having to walk into the streets to get to parks or get different ends of town. You probably noticed down Soro Boulevard, there's a lot of misses and hits where there's sidewalks, and all of a sudden, there's no sidewalk, and then you got to cross the street, and then you got to go over here. That's, that was some of the complaints that we saw in the strategic planning process five years ago, and that's where it was derived from. I don't know that we delve going into, you know, deep into residential neighborhoods. I thought it was more the collector's streets.
I'm on the side of this people specifically, of Soro Boulevard, which is up in North Heights. There are no sidewalks in any of the residential streets over there. It's purely a small, short residential street with, like I said, very, very large estate-sized lots. I met with the engineering department already. Tom Ward could not attend the meeting, but he came in in the beginning, and Randy Harrell ran the meeting. I offered up this petition from 100% of the residents, and he declined to accept it. He didn't want to deal with it. There is a piece of paper, there is a plan that shows a sidewalk on the street I'm speaking of, and he made, at the time, I had to do some documentation to agree to a sidewalk on my lot. So this is somewhat firm, and I guess I, I don't know who to give this to. I'd love to give it to somebody right now. I have a petition saying we don't want it, and I don't know what to do with it.
Sure. You can, we can, you can make it available to us, absolutely, Dave. And then we can look into it further as far as what the process is going from this point forward. The plan, I'm sure, covers many years.
I agree completely. There are a lot of warm inside streets in this town, need sidewalks around schools, green streets.
We're not picking you up, Dave.
Oh, that's okay. I understand. I, I agree with the need for a lot of sidewalks in a lot of areas, but I think a little street like mine doesn't quite fit. Here's the original petition.
I'll take, I'll take that, and I'll turn it over to Town Manager, Mayor, and he can turn it over to Town Manager.
I thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave. So obviously, what you're illustrating is, Dave, you're pretty well engaged with the process, even though you're not here a year round, are you here a year round yet? Not yet? All right. So making folks aware of this is always our goal, make sure people know what's going on, when, and what the Town Council's thinking. Obviously, there's, there's a lot enveloped in the sidewalk plan, a lot of goals that are associated with connecting pedestrian throughways, and safety, obviously, is number one. But keeping, getting more information out to the public, as you're illustrating, might be helpful. We don't want you to spend days going around with a petition, and I would rather have you be able to come forward or contact us to, and it sounds like you had some dialogue with staff. I guess you could, you could give me a call, you know, you can give any councilmember a call, and we can help you with that. We'd rather have you spending time, you know, doing home-delivered meals or, you know, something else, but, and at times petitions are, petitions are helpful as well. To understand how the, the community is feeling about certain things and what you've done here is, is certainly helpful as well. So appreciate the, the input, and we'll follow up with you on, on that directly. Right, yes.
If I could, Mayor. Oftentimes, what happens is, if, if citizens have a concern, they email the council. We can forward it to the Town Manager and follow through with responses for that. That way, it doesn't get lost in communication. Oftentimes, verbal communications get dropped. I'll get stopped oftentimes at the grocery store over at Target or some other store that I'm at, and I'll get asked a question, and I'll forget about it by the time I get to Town Hall, nothing to forward that information on. So you could certainly go to the town's website, you can get to the mayor and council there, and from there, you'll get email addresses, and you're, you're welcome to email us any of your concerns. We'll try to address them if we can. If we can't, we'll pass it off to Town Manager and have him have the appropriate staff pass them on. And there's also e-Fountain, where you can directly email staff with questions that you have.
And we're going to be getting, we'll be getting an over.
Yeah, an attract and response, and it keeps coming back to you.
Our next councilman will be getting an overview of our customer relationship management software program that's online. It's, here's just an example of it on the, on our website. This little e-Fountain emblem down here in the bottom left is a way to connect with the community, the staff, and/or to get information primarily to staff to affect something you're concerned with or a need that you have. People request things from aerial, you know, I need an aerial map of my neighborhood, to a number of different things through this functionality, and allows everything to be tracked so we can understand where the needs are, and also understand what our response time is to those. Council on Thursday's meeting will be getting an update as to how this is going, since it was implemented just a little over a year ago or so. But good example Dave brought up. You can bring up anything you wish. Here, we may have all the answers, as was illustrated here, but please bring, bring anything forward you have a concern. Mike, would you mind getting the gentleman in the orange shirt a, the microphone? That's not Saints, or, the Saints aren't orange, are they?
This is Liberation Orange.
Liberation Orange, okay. That sounds good.
Netherlands, WWII, that kind of thing.
Okay.
All right. My name's Scotty, and my question's regarding tax compliance. Okay. Now, state of Arizona has program cities and non-program cities, as you know. Fountain Hills is a program city, which means for all those who don't know, state collects the taxes, especially the TPT taxes, is what I'm referring to, the sales and privilege and transaction privilege tax is what I'm referring to. So the state collects a tax, disperses it to the program cities, in this case Fountain Hills. Now, Arizona Department of Revenue, now I live overseas, and I live in Fountain Hills. Fountain Hills is my home. So I, what I do, we can go offline. Fountain, the Department of, Arizona Department of Revenue has laid off 68% of their tax-compliant auditors and 28% of their tax collectors. That being said, is that, has, is there a plan for Fountain Hills to become a non-program city? Like, for example, Bullhead City just became a non-program city. Yuma is becoming a non-program city. They're using a third-party company to actually collect and do tax compliance for the city and town. Now, for example, I can go to Paul's Hardware, and I've seen people numerous times buy building material with a, I think, with a building material with a tax-exempt certificate, and there's no questions asked or anything like that. There can be falsified information on there, and that is good revenue that the city could have. I'm not talking about new taxes or taxes that should be in effect, you know, going forward, but I'm talking about tax compliance as of now. So my question to you, Mayor, is there a plan for Fountain Hills to become a non-program city so they can collect their own taxes? Another issue is, is rental tax. How many do places and apartment buildings or landlords people have in the city or towns that are collecting tax?
And what was, what was your name again? Scotty, thank you. I don't, we have not had that discussion that I'm aware of, and I'll probably bug Ms. Geddy over here, since she's our financial guru, at least one of them. I have not, did not, was not aware of other towns moving out of the program city. There certainly, I can imagine some reasons why we're, we would maintain that. What the concern it sounds like you're bringing is that the cutbacks at the state level may jeopardize some of the taxes that might be collected here that should be. Julie, why don't you chime in on there? Thank you for your question, Scotty.
Thank you. The first question regarding the town of Fountain Hills is a program city. If the town of Fountain Hills wanted to collect its own taxes, we would obviously have to hire staff or go with a third-party administrator. Currently, the state collects it for us for free. If we went with a third-party administrator, they keep a portion of the sales tax that they collect as, like a commission. So we have talked about it and looked at it, but this is an out-of-state company that does this, a third-party. So I've talked to the Department of Revenue, if we would want to have that option and pay somebody, I'd sooner pay the state of Arizona and keep it within the state. So we've sort of looked at that. Secondly, we have a sales tax auditor on contract that audits all the activity that goes on in the town of Fountain Hills. Can he catch everything? No. We recently increased his scope of work or his contract to include residential rentals, and he did a survey of residential rentals, and 75% of them are with property management companies. And so the property management companies are responsible for collect, for collecting and paying the taxes, and they are doing so. So there wasn't a lot, he contacted, he sent letters out to every single residential rental, and most of them, they don't rent it out, or they use it, you know, very rarely, or they're registered with a property management company. Does that answer all your questions?
How about the census, how about the, the information you shared about the state cutting back in those areas? Is that something you're aware of that we need to keep an eye on? Because I imagine those workers were doing something.
Yes. They have been historically understaffed, and, you know, laying off more just makes it worse for the state. Again, we have a contract sales tax auditor that works just for us. He's on contract with us, so we don't depend on the Department of Revenue too much due to our audits. They do, I get probably two a month from the Department of Revenue, but it's, they're definitely understaffed, very much so.
All right.
Department of Revenue, the auditors, the TPT, and the corporate tax auditors. I have an insight, knowledge of that. I have a tax, I have MBA in taxation, I have a PhD in economics. Without going further, that's, that's just my background. So the thing about it is, is that currently, in the state of Arizona, the TPT auditors cannot go outside the office because there's no funding for them to go outside the office. So they're only able to do by phone audits, and that's only if the taxpayer is able to actually contact them. If they don't contact them, they go on to the next person. So that's being said. The other thing is tax compliance. Like I said, you can go Paul's Hardware. Like I say, you can go Paul's Hardware. I'm not trying to, damn, the hardware company, but I can fill out, my name is Mickey Mouse. Fill out a number, I can make it up. I can go online, get someone's tax ID number, fill it out and there's no spot and there's no fact checking there. And I just went ahead and paid zero tax on lumber or whatever. That's money that is due to the town.
Thank you. I'm sure you're going to be available to plug in an hour or two here at the town to help us make sure we have all the bases covered. That's what's great about a small town and Fountain Hills in particular is we have people with great amount of knowledge that can, that assists the community. And with changes going on in the economy, what you're saying sounds like something we really need to be on top of because it's not collecting extra money. It's not collecting, you know, penalizing people. It's ensuring we're collecting what is due to the town through sales tax. So, thank you very much and let's stay in touch. Or if you would, shoot me your information sometime via email.
Email address.
Yeah, you sure can. Good. I've got a card I'll give you as well.
Let me get some more.
All right. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. Good question, good knowledge. Being in the general contracting industry, of course, we're responsible to pay, to collect and pay all the transaction privilege tax for all the dollars that we deposit. And I have to agree that the, they aren't auditing people as they used to and of course customarily, they'll go to a building department and check out the permits and enter the audit in that method. I can tell you that I have very, very little respect for them. They audited me and sent me a bill for $375,000 after auditing me for about six and a half, seven months. And of course, needless to say, I fought that and when it was over with, they wrote me the check for a sizable chunk that I had overpaid.
Are you a prime or a sub?
I'm a prime. We collect and pay the taxes. And of course, there's an honor system and you're going to find a crook at every corner if you want, if you just stand and watch long enough. Paul's Ace Hardware, I know for a fact, we actually filled out the application for our tax ID number with them annually. So, you know, there, there may be a few. There will always be a few that will take advantage of it, but there are also a ton of reputable contractors and people that are paying their tax as they should.
You also have to keep in mind, too, the statute of limitations. Only the statute.
All right, Scotty.
You also have to keep in mind the statute of limitations is usually, I believe, in state statutes, four years, I think, in Arizona. And when was the housing boom? So, in this period of time, you have to realize that if something's not done on a timeframe level, you know, statute of limitations will run out and the state may actually, the town lives out a lot, and state too, lives out on a lot of those funding, those funds that are actually due to the town.
Thank you. All right. More feedback, ideas, concerns, community center, senior services, otherwise. I'll go back to Tate back here first.
Thank you. Hi, good afternoon. My name is Tate Elk. I'm also a candidate for town council. This question is to the mayor and the council members. There's been quite a bit of publicity in the paper recently, especially letters to the editor regarding the recycling program here in town. I'd like to know what the council's plans are to do. It seems that it's costing the town money to have a recycling program and perhaps at the same time, it's also taking away money from the charities, the churches and nonprofits here in town. I just a question is, in these tight budgetary times that we have right now, how is it that this recycling program that doesn't cost the charities and nonprofits any money? How come it's costing the town money and why are we continuing to waste money in that way?
Thank you. As far as the cost and why does it cost us money? I'm not sure if we'll have a staff answer for that in particular. Obviously, it's done through a commercial company that has a program, probably for commercial pickups such as ours, that does cost money. There are certainly charities that collect for certain things. The town's recycling probably a bit unique because it collects for largely everything that's recyclable. So, that may add to be a reason for the cost. From what I understand, the people that donate in our towns are some of the cleaner donations. So, people are complying fairly well, but we, there are other outlets for recycling that we encourage the community to utilize that might benefit our organizations in our town. It came out of, the recycling program came out of our, some of our goals in our community to be environmentally sensitive, of course, and have that service available. And many people, I believe, that utilize that don't necessarily have recycling curbside where they live. They may be in a condominium that doesn't subscribe to that or otherwise, but it certainly is used in a great fashion and overused on occasion. It is a budgetary item for the town. We have a line item for that, a budgetary amount, and that's being challenged this year because of the demand. So, there are some changes coming up in that, as you may have read in the paper, and maybe we can have one of our staff members speak more to those changes. As in anything you do, the town does, there's going to be effects to the community and I'm not sure if what you had said is completely, has, if we've been a tremendous impact to the, to any other organization because I know we're overwhelmed with recycling and I'm sure that they are as well. But it would be great if the community, the town really didn't have a great need for recycling, but it's pretty obvious right now that the need is pretty high. People want to recycle and the town has filled that, that function at this time and there's obviously going to be some benefits to the community. Many, like as I stated, people in our community have an environmental sensitivity to the town and want to do their part to maintain a good quality of life here in the town. But there are, you know, as one of our local articles said, law of unintended consequences. Perhaps it's having an impact. If it is, we need to make sure we're aware of that and are sensitive to that. The goal, obviously, with recycling is to make sure that items that are recyclable have opportunity to be recycled and that has a value to our community on a whole. With the budget, everything gets looked at. So, next year will there be recycling? You know, it's going to be more difficult for the town to certainly offer and if we have feedback that the ramifications to organizations that do this to raise money are happening, then that's going to be a factor of us wanting to continue it or not as well. I'm just one council member, of course. We don't, we're not coming up with decisions here today, but it's certainly a dialogue we're all having, I'm certain. Have staff maybe speak to the cost, anything right now before that? Councilmember Rochambeau.
One of the things that's definitely recyclable and you'll see a lot of nonprofits, a lot of, the Boy Scouts does it, Kiwanis does it, various other organizations do it, is newspapers and cardboard. The companies will come out and pick that up and they're happy to get that and they'll actually pay you for it. But the commodity that doesn't bring as much money and you wind up having to supplement it is plastics, glass and the other types that nobody else is collecting. When we did the program out there, I'm on the committee, the environmental committee when we're looking at that. When we put those out there, that was a pilot program. We just wanted to see what the demand and the need was. I think we started with one dumpster and it was like immediately full. You see where it's grown now. It's gotten out of control to that point where it's costing us. Rick, what is it, $15,000 for the last nine months?
It's $1,400.
$1,400 a month. That's a reduced rate than what we actually would be paying if we were dumping those dumpsters without recyclables. So, the rate that we're paying is already reduced by waste management, but unfortunately, it's not a free program. Waste management has to supplement some of that and that's why we get charged for it. But it is a reduced rate. If we could somehow get the community to take all the newspaper, all the cardboard out of there, I'm sure we could reduce the program, but you still got a commodity this that if you look at the market, it's just going down and down and down and down. And so, you continue to pay to have that removed. But what you're doing is you're not sending it to the landfill, you're sending it to a recycling center. Staff probably wants to comment on?
I think it's a legitimate question to ask. Well, how come some people can make money off of recycling but the town can't? One of the big differences is that we have a catch-all bin, three or six bins out there, depending on what, February 1st, we're going to have, we're going to have three. And if we had the manpower to dedicate to separating it, bundling it, delivering it and doing the things, or somehow we can minimize the processing part of that, perhaps there would be some cash in that. I know of one community that actually hires staff to recycle metal for the town and supplements their budget that way. I'm not quite sure that's a profitable venture for them and it's not in this state, but that's how you would make money off of that. Our bins out here catch everything. Recently, we had a rollaway bed out there. We've had bags of garb, just plain garbage thrown out there.
No, we do not want those things. That's not what catch-all means. We do not want beds.
No, no, we do not, we do not recycle rollaway beds or garbage. But honestly, you know, I'm sure 99% of the citizens have done the appropriate thing out there, but there, there have been some who have kind of taken advantage of those bins being there and not been sensitive to what items go out there. So, there is quite a bit of work that follows the deposit of those quote-unquote recyclables out there that does make it a costly endeavor for the town to offer this. The council's doing this in order to preserve the landfill and to, you know, be good stewards, set a good example. And hopefully, we'll have this available one day for all residents. There will always be some that won't have that curbside opportunity and they'll need to continue to find places to recycle their items. Another thing that we're doing is that we're communicating in every way we can, as often as we can, that folks are encouraged to drop off their newspapers and magazines to local charitable and religious organizations. So, we're going to drive as much of that traffic towards those entities as well.
My name is Diane Weisman and a couple of comments. I mean, what you're saying is education, continuing education of citizens to treat recyclables in an appropriate manner. One thing that strikes me, having just moved to the community, is, you know, being green is more than recycling, it's reusing and so avoiding that garbage in the first place. And probably in the first three days, say, I must have collected 50 plastic bags just buying things needed for the home. The community that we've come from, people now, the norm is to say, do you need a plastic bag? Not to automatically put one or two items in a drugstore or something in a plastic bag. And that's an education thing, but not of the community, probably an educational thing that's more easily done because it's done at the store level where the store managers train their staff. Not to automatically put one thing in it. It's okay to walk out of a store with a receipt and one item. You don't have to have it in a plastic bag to prove you paid for it. Secondly, in the grocery stores, there's very little use of reusable bags, reusable grocery bags here. We've had big signs hanging outside of our grocery stores for six months now saying, have you remembered your bag? A lot of people have those reusable bags, but they leave them in the car. And you get inside, you think, oh damn, my bags are in the car, you know? But if the sign's out there when you get out of your car, you think, yes, got to get my bags. And after a while, it becomes a habit and you don't go into the store without those bags. So, there's things that can be done. We just had lunch at Bash's across the street. They're giving polystyrene boxes to eat a sandwich out of. I mean, it's a great idea. It draws business there, but they don't need to have the polystyrene boxes. Think about it a little bit, throw it on a, maybe a paper plate that will, you know, or just something that can be more, less garbage, basically, less polystyrene. Just sort of have the creators of that waste, have everybody think, how can I create less waste? And then I don't have to worry as much about recycling because I didn't create as much garbage in the first place.
Thank you. I would certainly encourage you to share those ideas, particularly if you've picked on something that perhaps organizations around town haven't picked up on yet that might add value, you know, share it directly with them or with us if it relates to something that the town needs to do or could improve upon as well. But welcome again to our town and getting engaged right away. And I know many people these days are picking up those little bags that you can reuse time and time again. So, let's hope more folks will do that. I know there is recycling for those little bags as well. If people continue to use those, I think many of the grocery chains do recycle those bags.
Yep. My wife's got 20 of those bags and I cringe every time she goes grocery shopping.
Yeah. Ms. Weisman.
And I don't know if people are aware of this, but in some communities now, plastic bags are actually being banned. You know, grocery stores, even supermarkets are not allowed to give out plastic bags, period. Because, and I guess this is a statistic that completely blew me away, but apparently out in the middle of the Pacific Ocean somewhere, there is an accumulation of plastic that is just sort of blown away and gathered together. And they say it's as big as the size of Texas. I mean, it's almost incomprehensible, but there's that much debris that we have as a society or as a, you know, created that has somehow got together and floating around out there.
Our committee is studying, and I think it's San Francisco, it's one of the cities, I think it was San Francisco, they're trying to go 100% green where nothing goes to their landfill. And one of the things that Raymond keeps looking at and we talk about periodically and Jenny gets this information on it, Mayor, is, is the, is the stuff that they're doing in San Francisco and how can we implement stuff like that? But those are good points.
Well, yeah, anywhere there's a good idea to consider here. Obviously, the different regions, different states and countries have different values that we would place or restrictionally place or feel comfortable placing upon things. And those things change or modify as times change or needs change. But great ideas coming forward are encouraged. Mr. Carabarty.
Hi, I'm Dave Carabarty. Again, whole different subject. I know the town is concerned in some areas about wear and tear on the streets by large trucks traveling on the streets. I think, I'd like to suggest an opportunity to try to cut that down, not through the garbage thing, but through the cement and gravel trucks that come through town from Highway 87 where those factories and yards are. Couple of weeks ago, I was, we live in a condo in the Grande Saguaro area and a lot of the trucks come through that way. And I noticed a couple of weeks ago, there was just a caravan of four or five of them making a run about every three hours back and forth, big double wide gravel trucks and cement trucks. And they come through Grande, up Saguaro, out northern Fountain Hills, right through all the residential neighborhoods and they go up to the Verde's and deliver. And with the onset of the Elman development way on the north edge of town, I can imagine that the traffic is just going to be greatly increased. It would be really neat if the town could work with the Indian Reservation and Elman properties and have them put a little spur road up north on, where we're outside of the town or up along McDowell Mountain Road there, from, through the Indian Reservation because they have a road that runs just a few hundred feet off of our border there. And have them bring the cement trucks out that way and the gravel trucks rather than, I mean, it's noisy, they downshift and backfire and they roar away because they got big loads and they got, they gotta be a lot worse on the roads than garbage trucks.
We've received, and more recently for some reason, maybe traffic has been increased or business has been increased, we've received quite a bit of feedback of late on Grande in particular. El Pueblo makes sense, same, same direction. So, we are talking about that. We do talk about that with, with the state trust land being developed here, you know, the next couple of years as being a concern.
Do you think Elman is all reminded to put a little road in there?
Well, there's all, you know, and there is, there might be concerns of our neighbors at Fort McDowell, Yavapai Nation. As you go north through their subdivision, it becomes much more residential as well. So, you know, we're looking to look for the best solution, but we know as, you know, times change and as development of two square miles starts to move forward in that area, there's going to be some additional uses or traffic. We've been talking as we address our general plan about our truck routes in some degree as well. Rick, did you want to address any of that?
You said it.
Okay. I said it, but thanks Dave. That's, there are a whole lot of routes that aren't going to impact somebody as we went through our truck routes to, with Eagle's Nest being developed.
Well, I got in my car, I heard about the third round of these things I followed and they were on the Verde's and they weren't even accessible. Anything being developed in Fountain Hills, they were just using the streets.
Yes. So, I think in our general, I think we addressed Grande. So, I don't believe El Pueblo- So I don't believe El Pueblo is a truck route. I don't believe it is, so they shouldn't be on El Pueblo. But Grande is, I think, currently a truck route. Now, it's primarily because the Fort McDowell materials had that plant right on our border. But that's, that's not been in operation for a good period of time. I believe that, that made sense for them to utilize that route to get to places here in Fountain Hills and perhaps up into the Verde's. But now their operations are down off of Beeline and over by the river. So, and Grande doesn't appear to be a great truck route, even if it were necessarily needed. So I believe that's been addressed in our general plan. But we're gonna continue discussing truck routes, but there are limited options through Fountain Hills. We have to look at how the road's been built, how thick the asphalt is. Many of these roads were built, you know, forty years ago. So we, we will continue to have that discussion, but continue to bring your feedback forward if you see trucks, particularly that may not be on a truck route. Like to hear about that, Rick.
Do you wanna share some of the information that Captain Klein mentioned about some of these heavy trucks?
Yeah. The Maricopa County Sheriff's Office has been focusing on an area of need with the trucks and some of the safety issues that we would be concerned about. There've been some additional activities to stop and check trucks for safety in particular and right along Shea Boulevard. There's been numbers of large trucks, like you mentioned, that have been stopped, one of which I heard of, that didn't even, had no brakes, had no brakes whatsoever. So, you know, we, excuse me?
The trailer didn't have any brakes?
Yeah, the trailer didn't have any brakes. And then not too many, just a couple of years ago, I think a truck, one of those middle dumpsters either rolled over or dumped its whole load on Beeline after having some challenges. So we need to make sure wherever trucks are at, that if they're coming through here, they're not putting ours in any more danger than, than need to be.
Would it be possible to have some kind of noise ordinance? They like to downshift, and that's probably because they're saving their brakes if they have brakes. But they approach the stoplights, the stop signs, and they look for downshift damage. And the engine just roars and backfires, and this is residential neighborhood.
Sure. So the noise from the, just so, since we didn't pick up your question on there, we'll, we'll make sure we're addressing that as well. The noise from their, from their using their engine braking rather than their, their brakes as well. I know it was an issue along Shea Boulevard. I'm not sure how we addressed it, but it seems to have been mitigated along Shea. They're utilizing their brakes rather than their engine braking. And along Golden Eagle Boulevard was an issue. I'm not sure where we are with the ordinance. I'm not sure we have the right staff to speak directly to those ordinances related to noise or the equipment that our sheriff's office might have in order to, to manage, you know, decibel levels. But obviously, engine braking is something that they probably do address today, but I'm not sure offhand where we are with the ordinance on that. Rick?
We took a specific look about a year ago at a noise ordinance and found that if we created one, it had to be within the parameters of a state statute that is pretty restrictive with regards to, to noise ordinances. Now, you can have a noise ordinance, but enforcing it requires some pretty, pretty interesting maneuvers. Depending on the size of the street, you have to be with a decibel measuring device a certain number of feet from the center line or the center of the road. And there are other such requirements associated with this state law that, when consultation with our prosecutor, our town attorney, and also the sheriff's office, found it probably not very enforceable, difficult to do at best. So...
Approaching it from the downshift viewpoint, you're not even talking about noise.
What was that?
You say no engine braking, no downshift.
Yeah, I think that's probably the route we need to take on that. I think you're absolutely correct.
And I think, again, I think we have addressed that, and that may be in the ordinance already, but awareness of when it's happening and where, so we can ask our deputies to, to be in that area where there's troubles. We need to make sure that we're communicating with them where the trouble spots are.
And this goes for any nuisance or anything that you find. If we can get specifics, and time, place, et cetera, like that, keep a little notebook by if you have to jot down things, then those are a little bit more easy to address than a lot of, a lot of the concerns we receive at Town Hall carry phrases like, "Well, this happens all the time." And so we need to know when we can, we look at patterns, deploy the law enforcement out there, and it's been effective when we know when and where, even if you caught a description of the truck or a license plate, that's very, very helpful. But even if you don't, that, time is, and date is very important to us when that happens, and we will address it. And I know the sheriff's office is, is pretty good about doing that. And that goes along with any violation at all, and any nuisance, code violation, et cetera, time and place.
That is something the sheriff's office always looks for, is details. They do receive some complaints, but often they're not getting all the details that would help them to be as effective as, as we'd all like them to be. Any other, I mean, obviously, we're covering the gamut here, so whatever's on your mind. Thirty-four minutes to kickoff.
The, the question may be short, but the answer may be long. My name is Marvin Rosenfeld. It's concerning the downtown development, and I know that we're surely quite a ways off in developing the south portion of Avenue of Fountains due to the economy and the housing conditions. But I'm wondering about the movie theater and the outside consultants and what position they took on that. And with that answer, I'd like to follow up with another question.
Okay. Now, I'll start. The outside consulting firm that the Chamber and the town hired in conjunction, coordination, was the Swaback Partners out of Scottsdale, land use, planning, and architectural firm. And they, they tried to keep it as, understand the town at a desire generally for movie theater entertainment area, such as what we had seen planned here before. Obviously, a lot of people would say, "Why fourteen screens or twelve? Why shouldn't it be smaller?". They really didn't get into that detail, but it certainly made available different locations throughout the downtown for that to take place. So it had the flexibility to allow that, and obviously, the underlying zoning that we have there, particularly now, allows for that use in more areas. The town center zoning district is more flexible to allow for what really, what most of us would, would like to see there. Obviously, it's all privately owned for the most part, except for a very small piece here adjacent to Town Hall. So it's privately owned, so developers ultimately will work with those property owners or the property owners will develop it themselves. The economy obviously needs to turn around for funding to be available to finance projects going forward. Our goal with working with the Chamber and Swaback and having a great public process was to position ourselves so that when the economy does turn around, and obviously, most of us thought it would turn around a little more quickly than it has, that we're ready to go, that we're gonna start to realize some of the, some of the vitality that we all wanna see down here, not just for our existing businesses, but for new businesses, that rising tide, raising all ships. So it's, it's in the plan as far as the theater. There are many things, or options in the plan, and because we don't know what the future will bring, we wanted to keep it as flexible as possible.
Thank you for the answer, Mayor. It sounds as though we're a distance off from developing that program. A few weeks ago, I read that the community theater wanted to renew their, their lease from the town and have a long-term lease because their plan was to expand the theater with better facilities and maybe even more seats as well. I know this has been mentioned before, but it seems to me that a theater by itself may not be supportable. On the other hand, a performing arts program, which has been discussed before, which could combine a movie theater, the community theater, the variety of music programs that are in town, would be very beneficial culturally to the community. And I'm wondering what the viewpoint is on that, and whether the town would take it upon themselves, as they did with the community center, to headline this project rather than have a separate development.
Thanks, Steve. So would the town consider building a theater slash community theater facility? And it's not in the cards right now for the town to consider that financially. Years ago, I think it was envisioned for that piece of land adjacent to the library. In my discussions with the board at the community theater, as you express, their desire is to stay where they are. They, I thought, I was a little bit surprised. I thought they would have appreciated being downtown. That's not their desire. Obviously, that is town facility as well, the community theater, and they leased that property. And the obvious reason they wanna have a longer lease is so that they can receive donations from people in substantial numbers to, and have them have the confidence that they could realize what they would like to achieve there with those donations and have a larger, more modern, you know, theater and venue for, that works better than a converted, you know, older community center. So I'm not sure what will come of all that ultimately. And short-term, they would like us to extend the lease to a longer period so they can do some capital improvements. Now, as far as the town building something and having it turn into a movie theater, we're talking with a lot of developers, and any developer that really wants to speak or share their ideas with us, really educate them as to what we feel there is available, share them with the, the plan that the Chamber and we worked on, and listen to them for what they feel dollars might be willing to fund. If a town wants to go forward and spend money on a facility, that's, that's something altogether different. That hasn't been seriously considered for years here in Fountain Hills. But I think your idea in theory sounds like, like one that's worked. I haven't heard of, a developer hasn't brought it forward, saying, "Here's something we'd like you to consider for us to get a movie theater in your town. We'd like you to do X, Y, and Z, and then we'd be a partner." We haven't heard that yet. But like I said, we're open to, to all ideas, and perhaps we haven't heard the best one yet, maybe, maybe yours will be it. Did that speak to, to what you said, or did council members or staff wish to speak to Mr. Rosenfeld's question?
Pretty much covered.
Okay.
The reality is that a lot of things I could have, like the launch crews, I don't think, the quality of the downtown is very expensive. But as we continue to put projects like that further into the future, that's becoming even more expensive to build. So in a sense, we're, we're almost at a point where if we're talking about ground zero, which is of the economy, this may be really an ideal site to venture into something like this. And maybe we're requiring a bond issue, you know, getting signed with developers' hands, developers' hands, getting some power of the development of the downtown area because the lifeblood of the town requires somebody to be able to get, and I think a performing arts program could really be worth submitting to provide a central focus to bring people into the community, instead of Scottsdale, you know, and moving, or going to Mesa for the performing arts center.
Okay. Let me just cut you off, because I know if anybody's listening, they're not gonna hear, but thank you for sharing that, Mr. Rosenfeld. Mr. Geral.
Yes. The problem with, with the performing arts center isn't the initial investment, which is still a pretty high number. The problem is that theaters and performing arts centers are black holes for money. Having been in the entertainment industry and run theaters for something like forty years now, I can tell you that, that a publicly-owned theater, all it does is suck money. That was one of the problems why we didn't build the theater attachment to the community center, because it was the initial cost, but the ongoing operating costs of a facility are much higher than people believe. And the, and a movie theater, and a performing arts space, and a theater are not actually compatible usages because they have various differences in design that, that are required. Right now, the, based on what I'm reading and the people I talk to, the movie presentation business is on, on a cusp, and a lot of, of movie theaters across the country are being closed. A place I go in the summer that used to have four operating movie theaters now has one. And it's, it's a very problematic economic situation. The entire entertainment industry is facing, and the movie industry are facing, some serious challenges currently. For instance, movie production in Hollywood is down twenty percent, and nobody expects it to come back because the movie studios have taken a whole different point of view about the producing of films and the number that they are going to produce in a year. They're now backing down on the numbers, and it's not likely to change anytime in the near future. And the whole entertainment industry just not having anything to do with this. But if you look out there, there's discussion right now taking place in the trade publications that within five years, over the air television may be gone.
So more talent we have here, but all ideas are welcome. There are some ideas whose time hasn't come. Is that right? I've heard our town manager say that, but need to be aware of them. And if there's a partnership that we can consider that makes sense, has a good return on investment for our community, we'll consider it. We have a, we definitely have a, well, town halls like this, you gather ideas and you put them in the storage bank, and if there's opportunity to consider them, you do that.
Just a little bit later.
Yes, Mr. Rosenfeld?
Invariably, there are a thousand reasons for, for not doing something. And there are a lot of statistics I suppose to support not doing something. But a few years ago, the community center was not a good idea either, by, at least in the view of a lot of people. And thank God for the community center. I think it's been a great asset to this community. A lot of people didn't like the Target Center, which they thought was really a bad idea. And Target didn't think so, they went ahead with it. The town offered them a five-year program tax concession, and Target paid off that concession in three years. There are a lot of things that you can say no to, but if you want the town to offer something beyond what it has now, to be a focal point and to give more life support to the community in adding sales revenues, instead of losing it to surrounding communities, you have to think a little differently and do it in a cooperative way to make this worthwhile. And I can tell you, the retail people and the restaurant people would love to have support. And every mall, every major mall in the country, what does a mall have? They have retail stores, but they also have restaurants. And what do they have to anchor that? Very often, a movie theater. There must be a reason for that.
I didn't hear anybody say no, Mr. Rosenfeld. But also, I should mention, in the downtown vision plan, it also included an area to consider as a venue down at the fountain that'd be larger than the, than the performance pad, more of a, more substantial structure that could hold, you know, thousands of people at that area for outdoor, obviously, performances, which could be community-based as well as more national acts or entertainment here. So that is also being considered. But all these things are on the table. As far as us going forward and building a structure, I think financially, that's probably not gonna happen here in the near future. But if there's a mechanism or a partnership that makes sense, we're open to it. All right. Yes, Tate?
The, the town council recently voted to allow the, the community center's liquor license to expire. And, and based on the numbers that I've seen, it appeared that it was actually turning a profit for the town. Now, I do understand that there was some discussion about the liquor license only being available to, to nonprofits in that situation, but I understand Councilmember Hanson presented some evidence during the discussions that it would be available to profit as well. And I'm curious with the reasoning behind, if it was profitable for the town to have this liquor license, what the reason was to allow it to, to end, basically?
Thank you, Tate. So let's talk about the, we had, this is obviously before council not too long ago. Was that our last meeting? Our last council meeting? And then the one prior to that, we tabled it to have more discussion and more information brought forward. The council decided to allow the license to lapse, which had some cost savings, but as far as it making the town money, it may have made the town money, it may have cost organizations or other entities more money, which was not the goal. So obviously, going a step back is how do we make the community center better for our community? And this was a function of that. How do we allow our organizations, particularly the nonprofits locally here, how do we help them to make more money, to raise money, fundraisers in particular, make their operations less expensive so that they can continue to benefit the community through, through the mediums they come to? And from the evidence I heard, the additional manpower it took to potentially garner some, some profit, I'm sure once you factor in manpower, and the additional steps that were required, from what I understood at the, me at the last meeting...
meeting, to maintain both, what we called the best of both worlds, worlds, the administrative hurdles were pretty substantial in order to take down your license in Ballroom B or C from eight till five that one day, then to notify the state or have staff notify the state every time you were taking a license down, putting it back up. It seemed like an administrative hurdle, obviously costing some money, probably not worth the benefit. And then, of course, we're saving the, to maintain a license costs some money as well. But it's something that's, you know, probably available to us down the road. If we find that it's not benefiting our community, maybe that's something we consider doing once again. But I'd like to give opportunity for the council members to share anything more they have as far as insights. Let's remember Ashambo?
Thank you, Mayor. We had two commissions look at it. One was the Community Center Advisory Commission, and what was the other one? Oh, it was just the Community Center Advisory. Jerry's here on, Jerry, you're on that board, right?
I'll speak to some of this.
And I'll let you speak to that. And one of the things that, that we looked at, and we looked at it for probably about a year, was, was we want, the nonprofits were saying they didn't want to use the town's liquor license. They wanted to generate revenue for themselves. And we thought, well, if we could do more rent, room rentals and get rid of the expense of the liquor license, I'm not, I'm not sure that was even profitable. But if it was profitable, it was very minimal. So, we thought that we'd get more room rentals and more direct revenue that way by getting rid of the liquor license than having it. And then, what Councilman Hanson was proposing was that we keep the license, but we were creating a disparity because then we would have charged for the use of the license to anybody, whether they were having a wedding, or, I don't think the Chamber's nonprofit, so the Chamber would have to use our license. And we'd charge them for, any organization came in that was not a 501(c)(3) would have to use our liquor license. And we would charge them for that alcohol use. And yeah, we would make some money, but then it would cost them. But then you were creating a disparity between the nonprofits and the citizens. And you have to think about, well, what's the community center for? Well, it's for the use of the citizens. So, if you let, let go of the liquor license, then you give them the opportunity to find whatever vendor they want to bring in the alcohol. And they can actually go purchase the alcohol, or we had to purchase it from a vendor. They could go to Costco and buy it a lot cheaper than we could buy it for.
All right. Jerry's on, he's one of our, well, were you on the original commission?
Yes, I was on the original.
Yeah, so, then on the...
The back community advisory.
And did you help look into this issue?
Several times. The thing, the thing about it is, first of all, for the last total fiscal year for which they're numbered, the revenue was about $25,000. Our cost reduction in the budget for this upcoming year is about $20,000. So, that means that the differential was about $5,000. The catch to this is that with the nonprofits now doing their own business, we're going to lose about half of that revenue. And we're not going to reduce costs by half. So, we would be in a loss. We would have gone from a slight profit maybe, because there's some hidden costs in there that would eat up part of that $5,000 differential. And we would now go from a profit situation, almost assuredly, to a loss situation with the alcohol. And the other thing about it is, with the new policy, if I understand the way the liquor law works, and I'm no expert on bars and those things, I know a lot about governmental licenses, but any of the full bar licensees in town could do an extension of premises and provide liquor services at the community center, if, if I'm correct about the interpretation of that. So, that offers local businesses an opportunity to do some business, and the community center would no longer be in competition with them. And we are charging a small fee for anybody who does liquor service. So, it's probably, the new policy's probably just about a break-even deal from the cash standpoint for the community center. So, it's just was kind of a win-win all around because weddings and stuff can still get their liquor service by hiring somebody to do it who has the proper licensing. The nonprofits get to do their own service under, under a special event permit, and they can make money if they want to charge that way. So, it seems to me everybody wins in that kind of a situation. And it gets the community center and the town out of the alcohol business.
Through the due diligence, the subcommittee that looked into the community, was there anyone that had a concern with the, with, with getting rid of the license?
Not on the community center. There was actually two different advisory commissions, and some of it changes every year. And there was really never a difference of opinion after looking at the facts and the thing. It was just, it, it seemed like sort of the logical thing to do both times. And it wasn't a heated discussion. It was pretty much a unanimous agreement among all the commissioners on both times it was looked at, that this was some, a place we needed to go because the current policy wasn't working, and we were getting a lot of complaints. And there were all kinds of problems with administering this whole situation. And, and to a certain degree, the expense is going to go up because under the liquor laws, there's a requirement that the people be trained. It was optional until July 1 of last year. So, anytime we had somebody who was in charge at the time alcohol was being served under our license, we would have to have somebody who had received the training. It was optional before. It's not optional anymore. And it's all done by private companies, and the cost could be as much as $1,000 an employee to do, to provide the training for anybody who might end up being scheduled to do, to be there when they were the supervision.
Thank you again for sharing your talents, experiences on our commission, and for that more detailed look into those considerations we had. And staff obviously suggested it, and the county commission suggested we move in that direction. But I'm sure there'll be further improvements as our needs change, as I mentioned before, and that will continuously improve our community. Let me mention that, again, we're going to have some treats here shortly. And I want to thank the volunteers helping with the treats today. Rose and Roger Rand are helping. More volunteers in our town. Thanks for helping with our treats today and being here. And we have about 13 minutes till kickoff. So, do we have any more questions? And obviously, my business cards are up here. You can always contact staff and council at any time. I know your council members are going to be quite responsive to any email or phone call. And if you think of something in the interim, between now and our next opportunity to be together as a public, please do not be shy in reaching out. Any other last question or concern to share today?
Quick comment, Jay.
Yes, sir. Hold on one moment.
For being here to answer, answer questions.
I didn't hear that. Let's hear that again.
I wanted to say, I want to thank Jay and, and the other council members and staff for taking your personal time to answer questions from the community. That's a sign of a very healthy community, and I compliment you.
It is. I commend everyone for being here, particularly staff coming in on the weekend, Mr. Judge for serving on commissions, and council members being here, and the questions and the passions everyone brings forward that live in a great town such as ours. There's always room for more input and more volunteers. So, thank you again for coming today. Any last words, council members or staff?
Go Cardinals.
Yeah, go Cardinals. Thank you for being here.